To your first village board meeting of 2025, hopefully everyone had a very happy new year. Um, will everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for painted farmer, Navy veteran, 39th president of the United States Nobel Peace Prize winner, and most importantly humanitarian Jimmy Carter who passed away at the age of honor? Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Were you being in the background or do I need to turn my camera?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
There we go. Okay.
Hey, Tommy.
Happy New Year, everybody.
How old are you? Did you bring any snacks?
All right, before we move on to the end year reorg, I'd like to begin by introducing your deities for this evening. Starting at the corner with Trustee Jim Fryman. Next to him is Trustee Matt Fabro. Sue Suriello could not be here today. She is taking care of her mom. Next to Trustee Fabro, D H Trustee or Deputy Mayor Victor Forely. Next to him is Village Clerk Jessica McLennan. And I am the mayor, Andrew Jack Posner. So we're gonna jump right in with the mid-year organization meeting and warm light talks this evening because this is an important evening, all right? No mayor should show their toxics, but I am going to. Don't get your work done. Nobody should get your work done. Okay. Can I have a motion in second to establish upon liaisons to the village board? Liaison to the town board, me and Deputy Mayor Forely. Liaison to the planning board, Trustee Suriello and me. Liaison to the zoning board, Trustee Forely and the mayor. Liaison to the fire department, Trustee Fryman and the mayor. Liaison to the water steward department, Trustee Forely and the mayor. Liaison to the building department, Trustee Suriello and the mayor. Liaison to the highway department, Trustee Fabro and the mayor. Liaison, I'm just making sure. Trustee, liaison to the climate support task force, Trustee Fabro and the mayor. And liaison to both our school districts, the Royal Woodbury Central School District, and liaison to the Cornwall School District is Trustee Suriello and the mayor. And liaison to the police department, Woodbury D P. Uh, Deputy Mayor Forely and me are there. So can I have a motion in second to approve, I hate, wow, approve the liaisons as ready?
So moved.
So I got a motion from Trustee Fryman, seconded by Trustee Forely. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, attorney for the village, can I have a motion in second to designate Kelly Martin with a law firm in Martin Tauri as attorney for the village?
Motion.
All second, all second that.
All second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on, can I have a motion in second to adopt the following meeting procedures as presented? And they are available on the website and they will be printed in minutes. So can I have a motion in second?
Motion.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, once again, uh, they will be available on the website at the end of these minutes, printed in these minutes. Motion in second to adopt the procurement policy as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I wore a tux for nothing because I was double back. So hopefully I have a hot day after this. Okay, introductory local law eight of 2024, the sewer moratorium. Public hearing is being held to entertain public comments on introductory local law eight of 2024 to enact the moratorium on sewer connections to Orange County Sewer District Number One. Public comment is just printed in the Times Herald Record on October seventeenth, 2024. We, I'm gonna go out to the public and say it, see if anybody wants to speak on this. But ultimately what I'm willing to do is adjourn this to February twenty seventh, maybe. So at this time, does anybody wish to speak on sewer moratorium? One wants? Go twice? Okay. Can I have a motion in second to adjourn the public here until the February twenty seventh, 2025 regular scheduled village board meetings?
Motion.
Have a second? I'll second it. All in favor?
Could I ask a question about the, the comments that we've received so far? Uh, I assume that there are going to be significant changes, uh, and I would request that those be provided to the board whenever and as early as possible.
How about that could be done?
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion in second, do I have all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Fabro?
I'm an aye.
Okay. Public comment on agenda writing is open, as I can only say is the agenda is available on that small little table, white table. So does anybody have anything to say on the agenda? And once, go twice, welcome, come on in, have a seat. All right. Moving right along to administrative business, can I have a motion in second to accept receipt of the minutes of meeting held on December seventeenth, 2024?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So village, we have to amend abstract thirteen. Uh, we are mentioning it because we added two more bills to that so that we wouldn't have to incur any kind of delays. So can I have a motion in second to approve the revised abstract thirteen?
All second.
Seconded by Trustee Fabro, all in favor?
Uh, just a question.
Yes.
Are the ones that were highlighted in yellow changed?
At the end of that, 13.
At the very end?
The credit card, the two credit card ones at the end because the credit cards were due before this meeting and we didn't want to incur unnecessary.
I signed off on it, that's why, I just wanted to know which ones.
Yeah.
I have no problem with that, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving right along, as I like to say. Okay, Village Clerk McLennan, will you please read abstract fourteen?
Abstract fourteen contains measures two four two five three five zero through two four two five one seven nine six, is only two hundred ninety thousand, four hundred thirds of dollars and ten cents.
All right. Can I have a motion in second to approve abstract fourteen as read? Second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Fryman. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Fire Department Quick Request, can I have a motion in a second to approve Fire Department Quick Request One of 2025 for the purchase of thirty self-contained breathing apparatus masks and storage bags totaling approximately one thousand and five dollars and zero cents.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have to amend the start date for Ann Marie Murphy. At our last meeting on December seventeenth, a motion was made to approve to appoint Ann Marie Murphy in the role of full-time senior clerk in the building department, the start date is December thirtieth, 2024. So the motion needs to be amended for the start date, uh, to read January second of 2025. So can I have a motion in a second to amend Ann Marie Murphy's start date in the building department to January second, 2025?
All motion?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Attorney Norton could not be here this evening. She informed me, the mayor, that more time is needed for discussion to the New York State Moratorium. Due to the current agreement expiring today, so can I have a motion in second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign the totally agreement that's been made and entered into by between the village of Woodbury and the New York State Moratorium effective today and expiring March thirteenth, 2025? A second?
Question?
Sure. You might answer.
The question is, is the, this agreement simply a change in the date and what might that new date be?
Is it simply just, if it was that, I don't think it's that simple. And I think if it was a change in the date, I think it would be a bit more of, she's asking for more time, uh, to work with the New York State Moratorium. And that's all we're trying to do is just have the temporary agreement in place and then by March thirteenth, hopefully before that, it'll be the first meeting in February, the second meeting in February, have a fully executed agreement for everybody to review and to approve.
So this is an extension to the March thirteenth at this point, thank you.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, do I have all in favor?
Uh, we need a second, all second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing, can we make schedule a public hearing for Thirty Valley Avenue? A request was received asking for it from Local Law Nine of 2024, building moratorium Thirty Valley Avenue in Central Valley. Can I have a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing for February thirteenth with the village clerk having followed the orders printed in the Times Herald Record?
So moved.
Second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The Open Space Plan, okay. So several years ago, we formed a land preservation group. That committee under the leadership of Neil and Robin Kraus, who are sitting in seven seats away from each other, to keep that out of the drumstick long, okay? And a huge assist by Hugus and Henson, power here, has proposed an Open Space Plan for Woodbury. So, um, before I go on to the rest, I just want to thank all those people I just mentioned and those on the committee that put in a lot of work to make this possible. So, uh, talking to Kevin. And we're gonna, I'm gonna give more information from Kevin on this because we mainly do two public hearings on it. She writes, if the Open Space Plan is intended to replace the Open Space Plan and Comprehensive Plan, then that should be stated because amendment in Comprehensive Plan would require two public hearings. Now, what's in the Comprehensive Plan right now is just draft. So right now, what I'm willing to do is ask the board to schedule a public hearing for February thirteenth. We can schedule a second public hearing if needed for the next meeting at the end of February, or we can discuss again at the next meeting in general. So sending all that, I have a motion in second to schedule a public hearing for February thirteenth, here at Village Hall, and authorize the current and public members to take it to the Times Herald Record.
All motion?
All in favor?
I have a question.
You're gonna get the Open Space.
No, no, I understand, no, I understand. At this point, I'm trying to understand, the plan was prepared by the committee, but it's an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan?
It's an amendment to a draft. We're actually putting in, I guess the best way to put it is that we're actually putting in an Open Space Plan because we didn't have, well, we had it in as a draft.
Since two thousand eight, I think.
The only reason I'm asking is ordinarily, the Comprehensive Plan first has to be heard and any changes to that plan have to be made by the planning board prior to this board. So have they?
There was no, I need to do referrals on this and I don't know if I do, but we do that in January twenty third.
If you would check that because I think that's the, the sequence.
Okay, you, the board should have this plan in place, but they should have something next week. Okay, so you'll put in time to review it.
Okay.
So I have a motion in second, do I have all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the D E C issued a new general permit, G P dash O dash twenty-four dash O O one, M S Fours, uh, which stands for municipal separate storm sewer system effective January third, twenty twenty-four. As a result of the new permit, there are several updates required. So the storm ma, stormwater management program, as well as the standard operating team, first round of updates were done within six months of the effective dated permit. So that's already completed. The second round of updates is due within a year of the effective dated permit, which would be January third, twenty twenty-five. The village engineer requested the village board announce the availability of updated stormwater management program, a public review and comment at Village Hall, and I don't know if that goes on to the website as well? That's it for that, okay. Moving on, we have an additional item for the D E C. Okay. Introduce number local law one of twenty twenty-five. Okay, local law one to amend chapter two seven seven, article eight of the village code, it has taxation, volunteer firefighters, they fire company exemptions. Desiree, go next, yeah.
My understanding is you all received an email this afternoon from the sole assessor, Julie Rose, that the state has amended the form in relation to the exemption that's that the volunteer firemen and ambulance members are eligible to receive to allow that if you volunteer at a volunteer entity outside of your residential jurisdiction, you now receive that credit towards as if you were volunteering within the jurisdiction. Luckily, your law as is pretty much covered that with exception of those two sections that are proposed this evening. One is to eliminate the need for the Woodbury Fire Chief and the Woodbury Ambulance President to prepare a report because if you volunteer elsewhere, neither of those two would be able to do that. And the other one was to remove the section that said that you would receive a discount on your village of Woodbury taxes because for the village of Woodbury Fire Department. It says something that's specified just for the department. So those two sections are being amended. It has to be adopted and in place by, uh, March first, which is the, uh, tax accessible date. So I am asking that you have your public hearing at your next meeting, which is enough time for the clerk to do the publication. And then I can't imagine they'll be controversial on it. We can adopt it that night, she can get it filed in plenty of time so that Julie has assurance that it's in place.
I'll move to schedule the hearing.
Okay, so a motion in second to schedule a public hearing for January third. I have a motion from Trustee Fryman, do I have a second?
All second that.
Seconded by Trustee Fabro. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I don't think I'm doing the business. Okay, it's our favorite party program here in the village of Woodbury, and that's public comment. So at this time, I don't comment on anything. I don't care what it is. You gotta, people, trusty, wanna talk about, I'm gonna do that. I don't like being actors, getting blocked out until it does the thing we're supposed to do. I'm a cop.
I thought you liked me. Oh, that's it.
I'll call that, there it goes. Okay, you share up first and you get recognized.
No, I'm just stretching. How are you?
Lisa, go ahead, you go first, there.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We had a lot come through, right? We had a lot come through. Hello, hello? Is it on? It is on, it's on. No problem. So, um, really quick, thanks everybody who came out for Reese Across America. I know that was a freezing cold day, but we had lots of kids, we had lots of kids, and it was awesome. Right now, we are in the middle of our buy, sponsor one wreath, get one free. So if you haven't purchased one or sponsored one for this year, that ends, um, just January seventeenth, so, um, it's a good, it's a, a good cause for everybody that came out. And like Desiree said, we've been busy with some Climate Smart stuff, so that's, I did take, uh, the Christmas holiday off, so, but now we're back in full swing. So the audits in both buildings, both this building and the Oswalla building have happened. We're gonna review, um, that document. It was a little strange, I thought, for what they came up with, but we're gonna review it. It was strange, yeah, it was, I'm looking at it, I'm like, okay. But anyway, you'll find out more as we figure it out. And, um, Climate Smart has a citizen science project coming up for anybody that likes watching birds. It's a great project for kids. It's gonna take place here, January twenty-fifth, from ten to twelve. If you'd like to register, we'd, it'll allow us to have enough supplies. And then, of course, our beloved Repair Cafe will be back, uh, April fifth, from ten to two, right here. You bring your broken items and we give it our best shot to fix them, so. And then we'll be collecting bicycles again, if you have roadworthy bicycles that we can, you can just drop them off and we'll get them, uh, to a, a good center, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else in the public? Come on, somebody's gotta stop this.
Maria Hunter, um, I just wanna make note of the passing of two fine gentlemen from Woodbury. Last week, I attended the funeral services for Teddy Jones, great person from Woodbury. And then just this evening, I attended the funeral service for Ben Myers. Both men served their country well, they served Woodbury well. I knew both men and this town and village need to understand the men that have, and women who have served our country and who live in this town, village of Woodbury. We need to cherish them, we need to talk to them. And as I was speaking to the six men from the seven seven nine tonight, the six of them were up in the front, they did a, a service tonight. It's very heartwarming and talking with the children tonight, the two daughters and the two sons. When I told them how I had been, be, a dis, um, he wasn't grand marshal, he was, uh, grand marshal and, and one of the divisions, and how he called me and how he told me how, how much time he had left with us. And then I told him, I said, well, you're gonna be my division marshal. Oh, Marie, I can't do it. And I told the children tonight, I lied to Ben. I told Ben, it's too late, I went to publish the book already, you have to do it. He did it and I had one of his, one of his friends and one of our friends also, Doc, Ray Cooper, he sent me a little text message saying how wonderful and how happy Ben was that he was made part of this parade. I, I gave that story to his family tonight. I had the two daughters crying with me and, and the sons were like, that's awesome. They thought it was an awesome thing to have for his father. And I invited them both, whoever to come back for the Memorial Day Parade because we will honor Ben and we will honor Teddy as well. We will have, we have wreath laying services and those two families will be honored this year. John O'Friel, forgot about John, I, thank you. I'm trying to remember all the names, I gotta write. Yeah, but John O'Friel, he's another great person, he was very instrumental. Not a, not a people know this, Desiree and I know this, he used to be the, on the library board and he used to do president of the library board and he was attorney as well and he, he did well with that committee. And, um, we forget the people who were here before us, we have to remember them. When you see someone, ask them how their day is, ask them what's going on with their life because I'm still suffering from being there tonight at the funeral home. And it just hurt me to see those six men standing up there for almost a half an hour at ease, at, at their stance and everything. I bet no one can even tell me, except you, Lisa, who those six men were, but you know, we have to remember them. We have to invite them in to our hearts and have them come to meetings, let's just start acknowledging them. And they're all the true heroes and I know I'm on a podium right now talking about this, but it meant a lot to me in the last week, what, going to both services and knowing both men. And people need to understand, we have to embrace everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. I, I think I touched on this at the last meeting, you know, we, we have lost some very big people in this community over the last week. I think even, um, I got a notification that Susan Brandt, and also Kathy. So these are all the people that are active, were active in our community, built the foundations and they go to the next level, the next level, the next level. Those grew the blocks and what we have here today. And I went and met Ted Jones, but I've also never heard a single bad word about Ted Jones or anybody. Um, and the place was packed, to his, to his funeral mess. John O'Friel, same way, and I was there, as you know, when the, and, and, and Marie is right, he's a very old gentleman, and was standing there at that called, Bob Carter, Cat, Fred Onward. Okay, hold on, hold on. I know, seven, I'm trying to figure out. No, Kenny wasn't, he's not doing so well, Kenny. Bill? Yeah, Bill was right, was yeah, and I love him. Was Donnie there?
Ed was there.
Ed was there.
And, um, Don, Don, Don Maler was there.
Oh, Donnie Blair, that's right.
Donnie Blair was there, and Mr. DeSisto.
So the question is, who steps up? You know, who steps up who feels the void of these people that are all part of this community? So that's the age old question. I just, I, I wouldn't ignore it, it doesn't take anything to say, although it's on there. You know, because you have to know when they won't be here anymore and won't be here. So, anyway, anyone else in the public? Need now for a couple of jibis? One wants? Twice? Four comments, one is a comment that I don't want to hear, but I would go to, actually a, two people. Wait, I gotta announce.
Okay.
Desiree, you're popping.
You got them all in there. I don't know. I gotta follow Maria, huh? Okay, so on December twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, Governor Holkel signed a law that requires all municipalities to maintain official website utilizing the dot gov domain by June nineteenth. The village has already own dot com, dot info, dot net, and dot org, but we did not own dot gov. However, Village Clerk McLennan, today with our IT consultants, got right on that, secured it, and we should have all five in working order by the deadline. Now I gotta talk about some nasty business because I believe my integrity may have once again been brought into question and I hate when that happens. So I'd like to take a moment to comment on a page that appears in the current Town Supervisor's Newsletter relating to court fees paid to the village by the town. It states, quote, fact versus rumor, a false statement made regarding destination of village court funds, end quote, and it shows a screenshot of the town's abstract from October of twenty twenty-four showing court fees paid to the village. They do not state who made the false statement or exactly what the false statement was. However, since I have commented on the court fees to various media outlets and several residents when asked about it, I'm going to assume it was about my statement. In late November, the then-town attorney, who I understand possibly is still the current attorney, I don't know, sent a letter to the village board stating in part that since the I M A had expired, the town court, I M A stands for intermunicipal agreement, the town court will no longer be considered a village court, which means that a portion of fees assessed for violations of the V T L, which stands for vehicle and traffic law, which, in case you don't know, are tickets issued by law enforcement, will go to the town instead of the village. Shortly after that letter was posted on the town's website, I received calls from residents as well as some media, asking me as village treasurer as to how it will affect the village financially. I informed all the same exact answer. There will be no effect to the village financially since the town has never paid court fees relating to V T L, vehicle and traffic law, violations to the village. The only fees the town court pays to the village is for violations when issued by the building and or water department, although primarily it is the building department. Same answer to everyone and anyone who asks that question. Perhaps whoever prepared that page in the current supervisor's newsletter was unaware that V T L stood for vehicle traffic law and maybe they thought it was short for violations. I don't know.
I have no clue, but I can state beyond a shadow of a doubt that since the village was formed in 2006, and I believe I am the only individual who has been here since that first day, the court has never paid the village any fees associated with VTL, which once again is vehicle and traffic law fees. I encourage those that do not believe that statement to provide proof that it is a rumor and not a fact. That's all I gotta say about that.
Consigliere, confidential advisor.
I just wanna thank, is this on? Just wanna thank the board, uh, for considering the open space plan. Neil, keep me honest, 2020-ish was when, uh, the Land Preservation Committee was formed. I think it was April, maybe May. And, uh, committee members were selected in the summer, I remember, and it was, it was a very fruitful committee to be a part of. Um, I was the representative from the village board at the time. And then now, sitting on the other side, being a member, I, I think this is a tremendous, uh, thing for Woodbury to have on the books, uh, in, in a final format. And I am grateful that the board is putting this forth, um, with, with all, and, and putting, and considering it. Uh, thank you, Neil and Robin, um, you guys have really been the force behind it. Um, and I think it's, it's good, good thing for Woodbury. So come out for the public hearing and make your voices known. Um, I think everybody will like the draft that's put forth. It's a, it's a nice balance, um, to what we currently have. And, um, thank you again. Have a good night.
All right, uh, board comments. Sonya Farin, Trustee Farin.
I think it's appropriate to once again say Happy New Year and with hopes that, A, the weather will improve shortly and that, in addition to that, uh, we'll all stay safe and hopefully have a great year here in Woodbury.
Trustee Farin, thank you. Uh, Justice Scarrow.
Uh, well, first, I'd like to thank those of you who braved the cold for coming out tonight. And, um, secondly, I'd like to also, uh, follow back up with the Land Preservation Committee and thank the, those, those members who are here and those who aren't for all their work that they put in over the years, um, as well previously, before I was on the board. Um, I had the opportunity to attend one or two meetings and help contribute, which, um, you know, was, even though it was small, was still, was important and I was happy to do that. I'm confused, though, so the document is finalized with Kelly or it's a draft still? It has to go for more revisions?
No, she, we didn't even talk about it, so it's on file.
Okay. As of the last meeting I went to, I thought that was the last, or you'd said it was a final document, it was submitted to Kelly. Well, yeah, but, no, I just was curious if it had, um, any substantial changes had been made, 'cause mostly it was just like grammatical things that were corrected, but, yeah. Um, but either way, looking forward to those public hearings and, um, thank you all for your service. Circling back to, I'd like to offer, um, my condolences to, of course, um, those we've lost locally, Ben Myers and Ted Jones, John O'Friel. I remember Ben for years reporting on, uh, the Boy Scout troop when I was a Boy Scout. And, uh, we'd always, he'd always come in and he'd report on our camping trips, so. He was a great individual and, um, of course, my condolences to, uh, former President Jimmy Carter. I'd like to congratulate Alex Prizagontas and his appointment to the, uh, as town historian on a happy note, and, uh, also a happy National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. And, uh, Lisa already mentioned our, uh, backyard bird count, the 25th. We also had a very successful, um, PFOS, uh, presentation with Jay Beaumont at the, uh, Wood, Monroe Woodbury High School. And, uh, Climate Smart was part of that, so that was very successful and we're looking forward to doing more of that in the future. And, um, with that, everybody be safe and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee, uh, Deputy Mayor Forelli.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming out and once again, Happy New Year. Uh, I do wanna talk about Ben Myers. Maria covered a lot of stuff. Thank you, Maria. But I knew Ben, I knew Ben very well. We became, and I, I will say, I actually considered Ben a friend and a good friend. We talked all the time, especially when he was running the newspaper and he found out that I had a background in advertising and marketing, he was like my best friend after that. When I was, when I was, uh, when I first joined the board, one of the things the mayor asked me to do was start a newsletter, which we need to keep going again, in honor of Ben.
What?
Yeah, no, it'll be a real newsletter. Anyway, I told him I had an idea for the name, but I had to make a phone call first. So I called Ben, told him what the ask was and told him what I wanted to do, and before I can even finish asking him for permission to use the name Woodbury Gazette and to use his logo, he had said yes, before I even finished it, but I said, "But I wanna call it Woodbury Gazette Lite. I don't wanna call it the Woodbury Gazette, 'cause it's not gonna be printed, it's gonna be emailed, it's gonna be a PDF, it's never gonna print." And he thought that was great. He loved the fact that we were keeping the name alive. And, um, he got a copy every time we sent one out and he always called and commented on it. So Ben was just an all-around great guy and he was very active in the community. Yes, as Maria mentioned, you know, he was active in the men's club, the Woodbury Community Association. Uh, we made him an honorary member last April. Uh, I had the, uh, the pleasure of driving him to and from that meeting. And like Maria said, I also lied to him. I knew what he was getting and I couldn't tell him. Senator Scoofers gave him a proclamation in addition that the men's club gave him a plaque. He was almost in tears when he got it, he was not expecting that. It was a great, great night for everybody that was there to honor Ben. Uh, he was also, you know, a member of the Marine Corps, uh, the Woodbury Gazette ran, you know, for people that weren't around then. And Jimmy, when I look at you, you're relatively new, you have no idea what the Woodbury Gazette is, but it was a Woodbury newspaper that Ben ran for 10 years before he helped in other issues, he couldn't do it anymore, financial issues, so. Uh, and that paper is greatly missed, trust me. So that's what I wanted to talk about, Ben, he's gonna be, he's a big loss for this, uh, town all the way around. He was involved in so many things, he showed up everywhere. He was just a very nice guy, I mean, I, I don't know what else to, to say. So I'm gonna move on. I had the pleasure of meeting with the owner and the chef of the Grill and Fire, which is gonna be where the old Cafe Fiesta was. And I've got their menu, many, many pages of their menu. So what they're gonna do, and it's very interesting what they plan to do, they plan to do breakfast, lunch and dinner. And they're also, the, the food they're gonna serve is gonna be American, Italian and Spanish. So again, they have breakfast omelets, they have pancakes, you know, they have all different kinds of stuff, steaks and wraps and burgers. So they're in a process, they're very close to opening. They have the permit from the building department, he just needs the final approval. Once he gets the final approval, he just needs approval from the health department and he can open. So with a little bit of luck, they'll be opening very shortly. I hope so, anyway. Go there and check them out. If anybody wants to see the menu, I have a copy of it here, I can show you after the meeting. And then a couple of, uh, fundraisers that are coming up, I mentioned the last meeting, the, um, the Woodbury Community Association is having their annual heart dance. This year is gonna be on February 15th and it's gonna be at Mario's. Uh, Mario's will be closed to the public for that night, or taken over the whole restaurant. Um, it's $225 per couple and that includes, um, a sit-down meal, um, dessert, uh, drinks, open bar, five-hour open bars, basically everything, uh, and dancing, we're gonna have a DJ there. And that's always a good event. And like I like to point out, as of last year's tallies, we raised over the years over $38,000 for the American Heart Association. So the fundraiser, the money that's raised does go to the American Heart Association, that's what it's for. And then the last, last thing, the Knights of Columbus is having their annual St. Patrick's Dinner Dance on March 15th at the gym, uh, over at, uh, St. Patrick's Church. So that's gonna be at seven, from 7:00 to 10:00 PM, and that's gonna be the usual thing, that's $50 per person, it's all-inclusive. Uh, those tickets will be sold after mass, so you can contact any one of the Knights of Columbus. The dinner's gonna include corded beef, cabbage, chicken, french hays, soft drinks, beer and wine, soda, bread, dessert, a DJ, uh, the way it's been the last couple of years. So I just wanna, you know, save the date for both of those events. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, one event that, or two events that are also upcoming are the Woodbury PD's annual Pop for Bingo, which is on February 1st. And I'm looking just to see where the Woodbury Senior Center is gonna be host in a defensive driving course on... Oh, I hear you. January 24th, on Friday, and it's a long day, 10:45, have the lunch, have some snacks, but the people are in need of a defensive driving course. Woodbury is bringing it to you. As, uh, Trustee Scarrow mentioned, today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day for the PD. Each year, we recall our nation's citizens to action to support law enforcement. Those citizens who appreciate law enforcement and are discouraged by the negative attention given to law enforcement are encouraged to take part. Uh, take time on January night to show your support. Partnering organizations and supporting law enforcement officers nationwide will come on the National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. So in light of recent, or not going to be some negative, uh, negative activity directed toward the law enforcement nationally, there is a need to show law enforcement officers like we have here in, uh, with our Woodbury PD, that our citizens recognize difficult and sometimes impossible career they have chosen in public service to walk. You can show your support numberways, but the best way to show your support is just by walking up to one of our local Woodbury PD or local state troopers, or even a retired guy, a zombie house, in the back of the room, and sound like, "Thank you." And it's, it's as simple as that. So I just wanna thank our Woodbury police department, our state troopers, all retired police officers here in Florida. Thank you for your service and putting it on the line for each and every one of us. Um, I'm not gonna go into kind of plans for 2025 yet, and I've got mine, but I will say that the Woodbury Lego Club, that I absolutely love and adore, is moving into Village Hall here. Uh, they have the first event, looks like it's going to be February 6th here. So I will have more details, and the details will come up on the Facebook page and the website, Village Woodbury. So I just wanna put that out there. I wanna thank publicly the Women's Auxiliary, or the Heather Mills Fire Company Women's Auxiliary. So the Teddy Jones family, or the Jones family wanting the coalition to be back here, had Village Hall, they needed space for it. Uh, I mean, the rep invited food to that event, and it was the Women's Auxiliary that set Bobby Blair, uh, Bobby Blair, set all the tables and chairs, but then they went to work. So they were fantastic. Um, this was something that they called to service for the last second, they helped me out, and they did phenomenal job. So they're always looking for new members, uh, please give them an opportunity. For zombie pound in the back of the room, zombie holes. So, oh, and I want something from me and I want something from them, so I will be calling and putting both blow, and asking for some percentage of zombie holes if you can lay out. If it's structural needs, that they're looking to union Woodbury. The two things I want from them are some percentage zombie hole gone from Woodbury and the banners, 'cause I want the banners up and red by red and beige. Now, I want to be...
Memorial Day?
Memorial Day, excuse me, thank you. Memorial Day. So it's been a long time coming, I've got a good crew together for this, with Lisa and Maria Hunter back and Trustee Deputy Mayor Woodforelli, so it's time we pull this off and get it done. Okay. In other news, okay, I'm, I'm gonna ask Desiree Cop in a couple questions. Desiree, have you ever seen me in a princess dress?
Say yes, please say yes.
Is this a fact or fiction thing?
Yeah, no, it's not a fact.
No, I've never seen you in a princess dress. I have not seen you pull out Harry dust. No, no.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, if you get violations here in Woodbury... There is no magic wand for the mayor to wave, okay? I cannot wave your violations away. I cannot wave these state requirements away. If anybody thinks I could just snap my fingers and these things will go away, they're talking to the law mayor. I am not gonna pull out a bag of Harry dust and sprinkle your 13 violations away, with 39 images of violations, 17 violations. Do what you were supposed to do in the first place. Right in board you go in, you get your approvals. Those approvals are supposed to go into the field and be done that way. I am not anybody's emergency access door, okay? So there will not be any Harry dust. There will not be any magic wand, and I will not be putting on a fairy flag on your dress or a princess dress, okay? Any mayor, supervisor, councilperson, trustee, politician in general, let me say that they can just snap their fingers and this will be fixed for you. You should be very concerned about that, because there's no way to do this. There are checks and balances with government and that is not happening with me. There's a zone board, there's a planning board, we have consultants, we have trustees, and it's approved by a five-member board, okay? So once again, I will say one last time, I feel, yes, you've got violations, but it's not happening, okay? Like I said, if somebody tells you that I can and I do, then you should be concerned about me, okay? Because it just, they don't just disappear, you get everything for a pop, okay? Doesn't happen, keep that in mind, please, when you call me and you're like, "Boy, you put on social media that, oh, it's the mayor's pop?" "No, the mayor's not blocking it." Okay? So, please, contact me, contact my office. Everybody contact me. I'm okay with it, okay? I'm making a bit bucks here, I'm making about three cents an hour to do this job. Come on! So you can reach me and I am there to answer your questions. There's some, "Don't yell at us, don't yell at me, don't yell at my girls." That just doesn't work for me and I will call my girls, but that's why I say, that was my, and I may just repeat that for the newsletter, but we do put that out. So, anyway, with no further business to discuss or comments received, I will entertain a motion in a second to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Our next scheduled meeting is February 13th. And still, man, remember, Chuck Norris built the hospital, he was born. I'm thinking you go, you're a hero, no!